4:00 PM and I'd like to welcome everybody to our four o'clock city commission study session. We'll start with public comments. Do we have any?
Not today.
All right, thank you. Moves us on to interviews for our city open board seats. We'll start with Lindsay Humphrey for the library board.
Right here.
Come on up.
Okay. I sit here?
Yeah, absolutely.
I brought my resume because I wasn't sure what we'd do in ten minutes.
Thank you.
You all need that.
I'll just set it right there actually and we'll grab it.
Okay.
We'll just go around the, we're missing one commissioner today, but we'll go around the table today and each of us will ask you a question. And at the end, if you've got anything else you'd like to tell us, let's have it. So we'll start with Commissioner Graves.
Why would you like to serve on the Ottawa Library Board?
Well, I have a long history of doing service. When I was younger, I did like children's type stuff. And then most recently and presently, I've been helping the Heritage League of Greater Kansas City. And it doesn't really require that much time. I just help them with marketing and we manage their website. So I'm just looking for a little bit more to do and I, the library is really special to my family and to a lot of my friends.
Commissioner Clay?
What specific skills, qualifications, and experience could you offer to the board?
Well, what, I have a lot. So I have been running a company for a long time. And then in 2020, I took a break and I actually handed the company over to my husband. So he's running it and I'm just stepped down to be a vice president and I help him, but I'm now a homeschool mom. So I have a lot of business experience and I, like I have a lot of marketing, that's what I'm doing for Heritage League. And I can do inventory control, accounting. And I've been over like up to thirty or thirty-five employees at a time. So I understand the HR side too. So I think I'm a jack of all trades.
Commissioner Stu?
Okay, Mike Skidmore, good to meet you. Good to have you here today. Welcome to Ottawa. First of all, you lived here how long?
Thank you. A year. Yes, thank you.
Good to have you. What role do you see the library serving for the city of Ottawa?
Well, personally, in my life and a lot of the people I hang out with are homeschoolers. And so it's really important to us in kind of a unique way and that especially people who are on a budget and can't afford to buy their own books or don't want to, maybe because they know they're not going to really need them for very long. The library is like just indispensable to them. So from my personal experience, that would be it. But I know there's a lot of other roles that the library serves.
Okay, good. Thanks. Lindsay, what do you perceive to be the biggest need or concern regarding the library?
What do you mean by that? The biggest need for the community or the library itself?
If you think it's for the community or do you think it's for certain people individually or, or what do you think? Do you know of anything you've heard concerns you about the library or something they may need?
No, I don't think so.
So if you don't have any of that, do you know of any changes or improvements that the library may need to make?
Maybe. I don't know. I don't know that it's worth bringing up right now. I mean, I've seen some things, but I, you know.
Just some of them.
Oh, I don't know. I can talk about it later. I think, no, I think it's great. I love the library. We come here a lot. I love the children's room. I think Paula down there is awesome. And the other helpers that are down there are great too. And the people that work here are like super friendly. I mean, maybe that's just indicative of Ottawa in general, but I think that they're very, very friendly and really helpful. I know that they're talking about doing the bigger building and I've asked Paula about that a few times and I think that's great too. Yeah, any improvements would just be the kind of improvements that you could see anywhere. Nothing major.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Lindsay?
Do you may bring out the big one?
Yes, let's hear it.
Okay, all right. So with regard to the inventory system of our library, do you think it's important, let me ask, do we decimal or do we not?
Do we decimal? Like with the cards? I don't think anyone would know how to use that.
You're reading too much into this. Slow it down. It's just a joke. Do we decimal?
Oh, yes, okay.
I guess we do.
I think you probably shouldn't.
Finally an answer!
Are you talking about cards in the book?
We finally have an answer. Lindsay, is there anything you'd like us to know that we haven't asked or any important thing that might be valuable to the interviewers?
Okay, yeah, I have my own questions too, but I would just, I think I, I think I told you everything. On my objective, I'll just read it. I'm applying to the library board of trustees to continue my passion of service. Further, the Ottawa library is a very special place for my family and the homeschool community. My experiences in social services and business leadership have given me a set of skills the board may find useful. And that leads me to one of my questions that they can see that I'm filling with that, was that person filling a particular role with, on the board? Like treasurer or something?
He was actually, he's currently the president.
Oh, okay.
Now, you would just be filling an opening. You wouldn't necessarily be filling, filling that spot.
Right.
And I think, do you already have a replacement?
So we will in May elect new officers and he goes off the board the end of April. So all those officers will be reelected by the board.
Okay. Okay.
There's seven people on our board and four.
Okay. And do each of the people on the board, do they serve a, or do they get short, sort of like funneled into a certain role? Like does one person handle financial stuff and one person handle public relations?
Our job is to just appoint somebody to the board. Once you get there, Terry's going to be the one you're going to be dealing with a lot. Just because she, you know, being her role with the city. And then they, like she said, in May, there's decisions that are made on these positions that are filled. But that's not our job. Our job is just to, just to do the interviews and fill those open positions.
Okay. Okay. So would I be responsible for something in particular or is it more broad?
So it's more broad, but if there, if you do have a skill set, absolutely, we will take advantage of that skill set and use you for, you know, suggestions on budgets and programming and PR.
Okay.
All of that, absolutely.
And how many hours and what I'd be expected to?
So the board meetings usually last one to two hours a month with one meeting a month. And then it's whatever else you guys want to commit to volunteering, to coming in and helping with any of that.
Okay.
So absolutely.
Do you have an idea of how much people typically commit?
I would say two to four hours a month.
Oh, okay. Do you guys have any other questions for me? I have two more minutes.
Do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Although if they're all for you, maybe I should just ask you later. I didn't realize it wasn't you guys.
Yeah, like I said, it's just our role to fill the position and then certainly if appointed, you can, you can bend her ear all you want with the questions that you have.
Sounds good. Well, I wanted to make sure I knew what I was signing up for.
Sure, sure.
So I might still ask you a couple of questions.
Absolutely. Yes.
Just a reminder, it's kind of, the further away from get from the table, it's harder to hear those conversations over there.
Yep. Yep. All right. Lindsay, we appreciate your time. Thank you for showing up today. We will get back to you. I think we have another one today. Is that it? Okay, so we may, we may make a decision today. If not, it'll be probably next week. Appreciate your time, Lindsay. Thank you. Let's move us on to our 410, which is Calantis for the airport advisory board. Good afternoon, Cal. How are you?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm doing well. How about yourself?
Good, good. Well, Cal, I'm sure you're kind of used to this, so I don't need to go through the basics of what to say. Please start off by, you know, telling us who you are and a little bit about, you know, you and then why you'd like to be on the airport advisory board.
My name is Calantis. I live at 812 South Hickory in Ottawa. Lived in Ottawa or around Ottawa most all of my life. I was actually on the first airport advisory board about the time the new operations center was built. I think our first meeting was in the operations center. So that's when I got on the advisory board. And then the year I was on there, we prepared to build the hangars. I was off at the end of my term, the hangars were up. The hangars were being built. So I've just always, I've always had an interest in Ottawa and the economic development aspect of Ottawa. And just want to continue to do my part as long as I can. And a couple of the other boards that I'm on, I'm ending or getting close to ending my time on them. And so had a couple of people ask me if I would be interested in being on the board again. At that time, I think there was one other applicant and now I think there are four and that's exciting to see. There was a time when, if you didn't have a pilot's license in Ottawa, you weren't interested in even being around the airport. So it's nice to see that we have some other people interested in being on the board as well.
All right, well, we'll jump right into the questions. Commissioner Graves?
What specific skills, qualifications, and experience can you offer to this board?
I guess my general knowledge of boards and how they work, government and how it works. The grant process, at one point in time, I was, worked for the Department of Commerce in the Community Development Division. Did a lot of work with grants, grant applications, federal money through HUD. And so I'm aware of that and we're working with government agencies, FAA, which we have to work with at the airport. I think that's, you know, pretty generally, I've been there before, so I know the ropes of the airport advisory board.
Mr. Clay?
And as you've served before, what role do you see the airport advisory board serving the city of Ottawa?
I think a liaison between the general aviation industry and government and also the community. So many times in the past, people have thought of the general aviation airport in a lot of communities as the, just playground for a few people with money. And that's certainly not what it is. To have a healthy community, one of the things you need to have, one of the assets you need to have is a healthy airport, well-run airport, an airport that's trying to better itself all the time through services it offers and through meeting with the public and educating them on the necessary things that general aviation needs to survive in a community. And I think that's the airport advisory board will do that.
Commissioners, Skidmore?
Okay, sure. Cal, what do you perceive as the biggest need or concern regarding the airport?
Well, right now, we have two. I'm really happy that, with the new fixed base operator you have because it's a local person, you know. If everything is, the cards are played right and the stars align, he will be here for a long time. So that's, that's a good policy. The two things that the Ottawa Airport needs right now are, one, a longer runway. And we need that to serve our corporate partners in the community when they come in so often anymore. Because corporations have grown so much, they don't have time to get on an airplane, fly into KCI, drive to Ottawa to visit a site. They want to fly in, in the car and be at a site in ten minutes. And so the need for a long, longer runway is a lot of the corporate jets can't be insured on the length of the runway that we have now. So that's a thing we need. The other thing we need is to expand general aviation in the community and to attract more people to our community. We need more T-hangers, more T-hangers and probably a maintenance building to go along with that. Those are progressive things and they only come under some FAA money available to cost share. But those are the two things that we probably need the most right now.
So Cal, along that line, are there any changes or improvements that you would recommend to us for the, for the airport?
Just longer runway and more hangars. I think that those two things will, they attract people to the airport. That exposes the community to people who fly into the airport because we, we tend to think of our community as, I don't know, as isolated is the word. I'm sure Paul would not agree with that, but, but we tend to not think globally with our airport. And you just don't know who's going to fly in, you know, take our, take our service car and come downtown and see our community and have some interest in it. It's just, so those two things, we get those, I think that will help us and help the community as a whole.
Sure.
Commissioners, any other questions for Cal? Cal, thank you for your time. Like I said, I'm sorry, this is the airport advisory board. I'm thinking, sure you don't want to be on the library board too?
No.
Okay, all right. That's Terry.
No.
All right. Cal, we've got a few more interviews on this, obviously having a few extras. I think we have one set over for next week, correct? So we won't be making a decision today, but for sure, possibly next Monday, so.
Anything else that I didn't?
You want to tell us anything we didn't ask you?
I'm just excited about what's going on out there with the cadet program. There's going to be a new program out there, cost sharing for a plane. There's going to be a club that allows more people to fly because they don't have to have the expense of owning their own plane. And so like I say, the new fixed base operator is going to do great things in the community. And I'm just excited to see where the airport's going. If I can help with that, I'd love to do that.
For sure, for sure. Cal, thank you for your time. We appreciate it. That'll move us on to our 420, which is Stacy Potter for the library board.
Hello.
Hello, Stacy. How are you?
Good.
All right, Stacy, why don't you start off by telling us who you are, a little bit about yourself, and we'll jump right into the questions afterwards.
Okay. I'm Stacy Potter, a new resident to Ottawa. I moved here in September from Wellsville. I lived in Wellsville for about fifteen years. I've been pretty active at the middle school. I have a daughter that's in sixth grade. They were looking for someone to start the PTO there. So I've been very active at the schools in getting the PTO started at the middle school. And I've also been very engaged with the site council at the school. So that's kind of where my community involvement has been here locally. I was also pretty active in Wellsville when we lived there. So I work from home full-time. I've worked for Lumen, used to be CenturyLink, I'm a project procurement manager. So I have a lot of experience working contracts. I've been in finance for twenty years. I just recently started a new job with Gainwell Technologies, which is a healthcare company. So I do vendor management for that. So I've been looking for ways to get more engaged with the community and I saw the library board opportunity and thought that would be a great way to get involved. I enjoy reading. I love what the library does for the community. And I know the library has plans for expansion. My experience with vendor management and finance background could be helpful to the library for that. So I thought my, my skill set might be a good fit for the library potentially and a good way to get involved in the, in the community a little bit more. So that's my background.
Great, great. Commissioner Gray?
Well, we knocked out a few questions there. Okay, number three then. What is number three? What role do you see the library serving for the city of Ottawa?
The library does a whole lot for the community. I've been very impressed with just the social services they provide by providing food for, for kids, coats for, for anyone. So just the social aspect of what it provides, activities for kids of all ages. It really provides a relevant resource for the community, for everyone. And then just the, some of the, like the activities they provide socially. I go, I participate in some of the book clubs. So it's a way too for anybody to, you know, engage and, and do some of the programming. So I've been especially impressed with some of the social needs that the library fulfills, I think, where there are maybe some holes of services that we as a community haven't been able to fulfill, that the library is doing. I see that. That's been very impressive, so.
What would you perceive as the biggest need concerning the library for the community?
I think an expansion of some of their programs. I'd like to see them do more in providing some of those social programs if possible. I know the library's looking to expand, you know, a bigger space. So providing more online programming potentially, more professional development opportunities, helping improve skills for the community. That kind of programming, I think, is important. It's a important need, I think. So, so more like technical resources for the community. Which I think if we do get a new, a new facility, like a new building, that's probably one of the needs, I think, that they are wanting to fulfill. Is like more technology, more computers. And those kind of resources are important.
Mike Skidmore, welcome to Ottawa. But you live in Wellsville how long?
Fifteen years.
You knew where we were. All right. There's not a library in Wellsville, is there?
There is. There is. It was actually one of the, it was just last year voted, one of the best small, small libraries in the state. And they're also expanding and received a grant and then rebuilding off of it. So, yeah.
My question is, what changes or improvements would you recommend to the city regarding the library?
The library? Again, I think just an investment in technology, more computer space available that, you know, kids could use for homework or studying. I know not, not everybody always has that available to them. And then just more skills of developing that for helping, you know, maybe somebody look for, developing their skills. Like if I'm, if I'm looking to improve my skills to get a better job, you know, like having some of those classes online where I could go on and take those. Having some sort of professional development, maybe possibly you could take online. Like for example, I know Johnson County, when I had a library membership there, I could take any LinkedIn classes that I wanted for professional development that was included for free with my Johnson County library card. So some sort of professional development, opportunities there that anyone could take advantage of. And maybe more programming around that as well, you know, just things that you could do to help people, you know, get better jobs and that kind of thing.
Tell me a little bit about your background in finance too, if you could.
Sure. So I'm, like I said, I worked for Lumen and I've always been in the finance background. So I've done contract management for ten years, managing contracts for, for the government specifically recently. So a lot of like, I did negotiating contracts specifically and so managing contracts to cost, budgeting and that kind of thing. But I do have my MBA, so I got that from Baker University, so.
What, what do you think the library would look like twenty years from now?
I think, I think we'll always have books. I think that will never go away, I hope. I like to have a book to read. But more modernized, like I said, I think we need to have, a good library will be, will have more, be more technical as in having more computer spaces available, that kind of thing. More, more spaces to allow, you know, people to like work together and collaborate on projects, that kind of thing. And like I said, different spaces and kind of programming, offering programming to improve those skills, technical skills, that kind of thing. That's kind of how I see it.
Sure. And what do you think about fines for people bringing back books late, especially if they were a commissioner?
I think the library is fined free. That's something they just implemented.
No reason in particular, right?
Commissioners, it should be doubled.
Okay, we gotta go.
I just excluded myself. Thank you for the consideration, so, yeah.
Well, Stacy, I, after what you, how you started the interview with everything, you, great knowledge, great information, and then the questions that the commissioners have, I don't have any other questions for you. Do you have anything that you'd like to tell us that maybe we didn't ask you or we should have asked you?
You know, I just, like I said, I'm a lover of reading. Again, I really have been impressed with the services the library offers, especially from a social programming perspective. I've been impressed. It's interesting to see the need, the desire to grow the library. So I think my skill set might be helpful to, to the library for that. I did have a question on, on the commitment of the, of this committee. How many hours is that per month typically? Is it, is it? We have one board meeting.
Terry, Terry, I know you explained it earlier. Could you come up real quick just so they can hear you, just so, yeah, thank you.
So we meet once a month. The meetings usually last one to two hours. And then it's up to you as much as you want to get involved beyond, you know, if we have fundraisings and stuff like that, yes, we want the board more involved. But I would say both, most board members are probably two to four hours a month.
And when is that? Maybe is it during the?
It's the fourth Monday of every month at four.
Okay.
I'm sorry, at six o'clock.
Okay.
Our meeting is at four.
Okay.
At six o'clock on Monday evenings.
Okay.
In this room.
All right.
Okay, good to know.
Anything else, Stacy?
No, I don't think so.
All right, well, we've had two interviews today. We have one opening. We'll have a discussion later on at the end of this meeting whether we're going to make a decision today or not. If so, we'll let you know how we decide. So we appreciate it from Stacy. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That will move us on to our 430 interview from Chad Kahler with the airport advisory board. And I see Chad on Zoom. Chad, how are you?
Hey, good. How are you?
Good. Hey, if I, I want to pre-apologize. If I call you Commissioner Kahler, it's only because I've said that for like five years, so.
That's okay. No, and I apologize I didn't make it in there. I had a customer here in the office and it just didn't, I couldn't get out of here quick enough. So I don't know what's more stressful, doing an interview in person or via Zoom. So bear with me.
Will, will do. Chad, for the public and everybody, tell us a little bit about yourself, who you are, and anything else you thought we, we may need to know.
Sure, yes. My name's Chad Kahler, longtime Ottawa resident, live at 942 East Fairway. I've actually been a part of the airport board a few years back. Served my term on that and, you know, it's time for me to, to do, you know, get off the board for a while and just interviewing to be a part of that again.
We'll start with some questions with Commissioner Graves.
Hi, Chad. What specific skills, qualifications, and experience can you offer this board?
Sure. So I've been a pilot for probably, coming up on thirty years now. I actually learned to fly at the Ottawa Airport. That's been a, you know, a few years back. Been a, been in aviation professionally for just right around twenty, twenty-plus years. So, and then obviously, you know, spent some time on the board there and I know the Ottawa Airport very well. I helped also manage the, the Aviation Explorers Program at the airport. Gosh, I don't know. I, you know, I've served on the airport board and I've served on some other boards in Ottawa. I think it's very important to give back to the community and, you know, hopefully provide a few things that I know about aviation and help kind of move the airport forward. In, in listening to everybody talk, I'm actually really, really impressed and amazed that we have, there's so many applicants that are applying for a position. I know when the airport board kind of first started, I think that they were kind of dragging some of us to get on the board. So it's actually, it's actually a pretty cool thing to see that there's this many people interested in, in the airport. A lot of people up to a few years back didn't even know we even had an airport in Ottawa.
Commissioner Clay? Hi, Chad. What role does the airport advisory board serving for the city of Ottawa?
You know, obviously, you know, hopefully, I guess I would say we're kind of a little bit of the voice of reason. I know that it was mentioned earlier that, that a lot of folks see the airport as kind of, kind of a playground for some, some rich folks with their airplanes. And actually, that's not the case at all. You know, the board, I, I see it trying to, you know, hopefully moving things in the direction of economic development. I think any community that has a strong airport is going to have a strong economic, you know, impact on the community. You know, I think, you know, part of the, the position is, you know, obviously helping with awareness that we have an airport. But also helping, you know, make determinations of what is, you know, what's best served there. You know, the FAA is going to, you know, give X amount of dollars every year to, to the community use. And then I think it comes down to how do we, you know, how do we need to use it and hopefully help advise, you know, everyone that's there at the table and what, you know, what our opinion would be and kind of take it, take that, that information and run with it.
Okay, Chad, I've got the next question here. What do you perceive as the biggest need or concern regarding our airport?
As mentioned earlier, you know, the length of the runway. You know, I know T-hangers have always been a popular thing. When I was actually on the board, as I finished up my term, one of the things that we worked on and tried to, you know, kind of put, got to be a part of was the airport master plan. I think really, you know, I see the board as kind of following that outline that was determined years back. I mean, obviously, that has to be changed from year to year, but I think a lot of that, a lot of that plan's been, been put forth. And I think I see the board as kind of, you know, steering, you know, that, you know, that, that plan board as kind of, you know, steering, you know, that, you know, that, that plan that's been laid out and, and helping, uh, helping making, make those plans happen.
Yeah, thanks.
So Chad, what, what changes or improvements would you like to see made out of the airport?
Uh, you know, I, I think obviously continuous, you know, continuing to, and the city does a great job of supporting the airport, um, you know, supporting, uh, you know, obviously one of my goals is to get, you know, get kids excited about it. Um, uh, you know, I, I think we're, we're in a good space right now with, with management that's, that's running the FBO. Um, you know, honestly, I don't, I don't really see a lot of major changes that need to happen. I think there's just the, the yearly stuff that's gonna, that's gonna have to happen, you know, utilizing the, the funds of the state and the, and then the FAA gives us and, you know, using those in the best manner possible. Um, you know, would love to see the runway lengthened. I don't know if that's something that happens in my, you know, term or in the next 10 years. Um, but that, that would be a, a nice, nice thing. You know, I think depending on how things go with the, you know, with businesses in Ottawa and the, uh, um, the park that's, you know, just located right next to the airport, I think that'll determine a lot on how the direction the airport needs to go. Um, you know, it's kind of what I was saying is if you, you know, the, if you build it, they will come kind of a thing. And I, I think we definitely need, uh, additional, uh, hangers for, for additional businesses, you know, whether that be, uh, corporations that want to put an aircraft there, um, or just the expansion of what's, what, what's already there. But I think, I think all in all, I think the airport's on a, on a great path. Um, I don't see anything that, you know, uh, needs to change dramatically. Uh, I just think that there's probably just the continued, um, you know, continue, you know, looking at the direction everything is going and, and following what the master plan calls out.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Chad? Chad, we have, uh, I believe a couple more interviews, um, I believe one next week. So we will, uh, we'll, we'll have that interview and then possibly have the discussion afterwards about how we're gonna fill these openings. So, uh, once we do, we'll certainly let you know.
Awesome. I think that's great. I think that's exciting. Like I said, to have that many people that are interested in, in, in serving. So that's wonderful.
Chad, thank you for your time. We appreciate you coming today.
Thank you all. Talk to you later.
Bye.
Bye.
That'll move us on to our 4:40. Uh, Ashley Glassby from, with the Accessibility Advisory Board. Come on up. Kinda getting the hot seat. Hello, Ashley, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Hey, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself, who you are, uh, um, anything else you think you may, uh, want us to know? And then we'll, we'll go around the table with a few questions.
I am a early childhood special education teacher. I've been in special education for about 10 years now, ranging in some different positions. Um, I am currently on the ORC board still, um, which has been really fun and wonderful. Uh, I don't know, I've been an advocate for families with special needs for the entire time I've been in special education. It's one of my strongest passions and has been since I was a little kid. So I don't know.
All right. Commissioner Graves?
Um, I mean, this kind of goes along with that, but if you have anything specific you wanna call out, um, what specific skills, qualifications, and experience can you offer this board?
Um, well, I've been specializing my training in, um, autism and sensory needs and things like that as I've been going through my profession. Um, I have worked with families specifically to find, um, adaptive equipment for their homes or for daycares that they may need. Um, we work on it in school also. Um, we have to seek out kind of inventive ways to, to help, um, kids access things in the classrooms. Um, I volunteered at a couple nursing homes to kind of help, um, members get to different places and things that they need or find access to different things like that. Um, that's been a while since I've done that though. No, I just started volunteering at New Horizons Ranch, which is really, really fun. It's a really cool place. Never been there. You should totally go check it out. Awesome. I, that's all. Thank you.
Like you said, with some of your experience, what role do you see the Accessory Advisory Board serving for the city of Ottawa?
I think their role is just making sure that all families have access to any events, any kind of places that we have in the city, whether it's a park or, you know, maybe they need somewhere for a parade. If there's a plot in the parade where too many people or too many noises or something, maybe there's a special place they can sit where things, you know, that maybe the sirens shut off at that point in time or something else in those things, just to make sure the entire community can be involved.
Okay, welcome, Ashley. Um, what do you perceive to be the biggest need or concern regarding accessibility in Ottawa?
I think it's come a really long way. Um, when I can remember, um, we have the, the park at Kansas Park now that kids can access at lower levels and then things like that. We have the swings for kids that may not have the core strength. Um, I still see a big need especially for individuals in wheelchairs. Um, there's a lot of things that are still hard for them to access when they think about, you know, community places such as, um, like Forest Park, if they want to swing. We don't have a place for that for them right now. If there is something that they want to access, um, it's so hard for them to get to those places. Um, when they think about, you know, more, um, neurological, um, or neurotypical disabilities, there's still a lot of things I think that we can improve and kind of help foster, um, a sense of inclusion for those families as well, um, both young and older adults. Um, I think there's still some things that we can do there to kind of make them feel more comfortable and welcome.
So can you go a little farther and say what specific changes or improvements that you may suggest, you would suggest to the city on, for accessibility?
I think it would kind of depend on what you're looking at. Like if I think about, um, like an Easter egg hunt, um, you know, there's a lot of kids that they can't access those things because there's so many people and there's so many things that, um, would overwhelm, um, if you think about a kid on the spectrum or something like that. Those, those are very overwhelming places for them. Um, and I've been working with the ORC. We just talked last week a little bit about ways to get, um, those children involved in sports and community events because those environments are very hard for kids that are struggling to regulate and struggle, um, for those interactions. Um, if I think about older individuals, um, you know, maybe individual with Alzheimer's or dementia, that those are very hard places for them also. Um, maybe it is finding a different way for them to access, um, you know, a parade route or, you know, the home and garden show. There's things that we can do to kind of make those easier spaces for them that maybe they're not so loud or maybe there's more organization and more structure to them for their day. Some different things like that. I don't know if that answered your question well.
That's good. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ashley?
Thank you for that good point there that sometimes we have all of our faculties working like they should. You, you don't realize something until you're, I know one time I was on crutches for a long time and, you know, realize when you see a huge flight of stairs, they gotta go up this thing now and then, you know, falling backwards. And those things you don't realize until we are temporarily without
Right.
everything. And, and so it does take a set, set of eyes to see the needs around the town. And then, and I never thought about that. I've got two nephews that are autistic and the loud noise to do bother them. So parade is not in their, you know, part of their fun time. And so that, that's a great idea, like what you said there about that.
Yes.
It's a good point.
I was thinking about the noise thing that she mentioned too, because, you know, a lot of kids go there for that reason. Well, I mean, they do. And then you have, you have, you wanna, you wanna include everybody, you know, and unfortunately you can't because, you know, that affects the, you know, some of those kids differently, so.
Yeah, when we, um, did some things at the school, we made a quiet zone. So, you know, if a choir was coming through at that time, they knew that, we're supposed to be quiet. And, you know, we, we don't sing at this point in time. You know, we might just wave or we might just keep walking by, um, so they could still be included, but it wasn't as overwhelming to them.
I want to thank you for your, your volunteerism for the blessing box. I think that's a great thing we've had in town. It's amazing how it's grown and to see it working too, because people are in need or out there. The Horizon Ranch, I'm not familiar with that. Can you explain that?
Um, so what it is, is it is a ranch. Um, they mostly focus around therapeutic horseback riding. Um, so they have kiddos with a wide range of, um, abilities, you know, they may not have core strength or they may not be able to walk, or it may just be, um, mental health. Um, so lots of anxiety, um, PTSD, but they go out and they groom their horses and they get to ride the horses and they get their services while they're, um, partaking in horseback riding. Um, I, my daughter and I just went through the training a few weeks ago to start out there. Um, it's an amazing place. The staff out there is fantastic.
And where is this located?
Um, it's right out in Rountoul, um, right out, right when you first get in there. It's amazing place.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
So for you, what would be your number one, if you could pick one thing, in, in terms of the Accessory Advisory Board to address in Ottawa?
That's really hard. Um, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if I could pick just one.
For so many?
There are. Well, no, that, not that it's doing. No, I just, um, I, I'm a kind of a go-all-in kind of person. Um, so picking just one, I think would be really hard. I think being able to, to make community events more inclusive would be my big one. Like how can we work with those neurotypical things to really get them involved? Because they know we so badly want to be involved. Um, so I think that would be my big thing. When I think about the car show or cruise night and things like that, that I know some of my kids at school would really, really love, and I know some adults would really love, but it is so hard for them. So finding ways to make that more inclusive for them, I think would be, be a big focus.
Well, Ashley, we have three openings on this board, um, and we just have one more application, I believe, for next week's meeting. Um, we may have a discussion this afternoon, uh, and then whenever we decide on which, which way we're going, uh, we'll, we'll let you know, you know, how we decide. But we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did a great job. Thank you. All right. Now we'll move us on to our items to be placed on our regular city commission agenda. Commissioners, did you get to read the, uh, April 6th regular meeting minutes and our April 11th study session minutes? And if so, are you okay with moving out on to our regular agenda? Okay, that's what we'll do. I move us on to items for, for presentation and discussion. Uh, item one will be a continued discussion of the ordinance terminating the Transportation Development District, the TDD, sales tax in South 59 Transportation Development District. Uh, Tyler, are you available?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Hope you all are doing well this afternoon.
Good afternoon, Tyler.
We have, uh, as you just mentioned, a brief update. We had a brief discussion at last Monday's study session regarding this item, and we're back, um, to continue that discussion. The LOVES, um, has associated with it a 1% Transportation Development District Sales Tax. And that was put in place around 2010 to pay the costs of certain utility extensions and other project costs of Transportation Development District. When that was put in place, there was a maximum amount authorized to be collected of $480,000. And we have now collected in excess of that amount. And so it's appropriate to consider an ordinance terminating that sales tax. Um, now, one item to note is, and we touched on this last week, the State Department of Revenue administers the, the starting and the terminating that sales tax, and they will only do that either started or terminated on the first day of a calendar quarter with considerable lead time, 60 to 9 days. Uh, and so we are requesting that you place the ordinance terminating this sales tax at your regular, on, on the agenda for your regular commission meeting this week. And then that will authorize staff to work with the Department of Revenue to terminate the sales tax effective October 1st. That's the next earliest date, uh, that we can get that terminated. So happy to answer any additional questions or, um, if there's additional background we can provide on this, I'm happy to.
Commissioners, any questions for Tyler?
Yeah. Tyler, the excess money over that, maybe you told us, I forgot. Where does that go or who gets that money?
You know, that can be spent in any fashion that you can spend other sales taxes. So we've confirmed, and staff confirmed this over the last few days, that you did collect in excess of the $480,000 maximum. Um, and I think what we would first want to do is make sure that the city has been reimbursed for all utility expenditures to extend utilities out there. And then we look at the surplus after that that remains. And once we've quantified that, um, depending on the size of that, that surplus, I think staff might even come back to you to ask for direction, depending on how much money there is there, to see what, what works best.
Well, Tyler, this ordinance originally wouldn't affect in 2007, correct?
Uh, I think it was 2008.
Okay. So I guess what I'm, what I, the question I'm getting at is, when we say in excess of the $480,000, we're only exceeding this by a few months. So we're, I mean, that excess isn't gonna be a substantial amount of money.
It may be a substantial amount of money. It may be as much as $100,000. Um, but I think it's, it's worth keeping in mind that this was a fairly complicated development agreement for the LOVES. There were two developers involved. There was a TDD sales tax, and there was also a TIF component. Uh, the TIF component is still in place. And so I think it's probably safe to say that this sales tax could have been terminated sooner, but we wanted to make sure that we'd had some time to dig into, um, the records of the collections over the last several years to make sure that we weren't terminating this early.
And just for clarification, if we would have, what would have been our responsibility? If we would have terminated early?
If you would have terminated it early, there might have been tens of thousands of dollars that the city had paid for these utility extensions that it might not have been able to reimburse itself. So that's the risk. So that's why we wanted to make sure at the risk of collecting more than, uh, was originally anticipated, that we didn't terminate the sales tax earlier than necessary.
Commissioners, any other questions for Tyler? We, Tyler, as he mentioned before, uh, we've had a couple discussions about this. Are, so are we, be okay with moving this on to our, uh, our Wednesday agenda to approve an ordinance possibly?
Sure.
That's what we'll do, Tyler. Then we'll move it to Wednesday's agenda.
Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you for your time, Tyler. Thought I move us on to item two, update, uh, from Community Childcare Event with Paul Bean. Paul, come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, you didn't get the memo, you were at Burgundy.
Is there a reason? It's tax day, I figured everybody'd be in black.
Just here to give you an update. We had a great, uh, community session a week ago today, uh, at the County Annex in the Commission Chambers. This was in a gathering that was sponsored by FCDC, uh, Childware, um, ECAN, and Kansas State Extension Office. And it's, the reason I'm involved, as you've heard me before, is workforce issues. Of course, childcare is a big, big component to our workforce issues. So, uh, we had a, a, a really good attendance and it was, uh, uh, childcare providers, there were some parents there looking for childcare, um, and then, um, some potential investors in a childcare center, um, coming to Ottawa. Uh, they were there and their operator were there. So it's a good group of people to talk to and kind of get a sense, especially really one that is with the current operators. Um, and one of the questions I asked right up front, I said, you know, part of what we're thinking here is trying to grow and get more operators, whether it's mom and pop kind of operations or, and/or a childcare center. And would any of you currently, uh, that are providing the service have any objection to us doing that? And without any exception, a resounding no. Uh, basically the comment was, we get a lot of requests every week and we have to turn them away and, uh, these people are so dedicated to this, uh, it's, it really becomes a personal, uh, stress point for them. Um, so from that standpoint, the existing group was very open to us expanding and trying to encourage more daycare providers to locate in Ottawa. Um, the conversation, uh, that I had is really kind, trying to work through with different partners. And I think I've said this, this group before, it's kind of a public-private partnership. How do we do, how do we deal with this? And I think the first step, a part of what these meetings are for is to get the community involved and to understand this is, this is an issue for the community. It's not just an economic issue. It is an economic issue, but even more importantly to me, it's, it's an issue about our children and, and their parents. As we all know, if the, if the youth have some good, uh, care upfront, there's a lot less problems down the road. And when you think about the stress that the parents are facing, uh, because of the cost of childcare and, uh, the question of do, do they take a job and do that? Or, uh, you know, just how's it work? Um, so there's a lot of issues and it's really Um, so there's a lot of issues, and it's really, it's a national issue, but it's certainly a local issue, and I'm, I'm trying to help us at least raise the conversation from a local standpoint. So as I said, working on public-private, and what we talked about is, one, uh, FCDC in partnership with some other folks have had discussions with various companies and industries in the community to get them to really seriously consider making childcare a benefit from the standpoint of, would they consider, uh, paying a portion or subsidizing childcare costs for their employees, uh, just like any other benefit? And I think it's something in this world today, um, that I'd really like to see our employers think about. So we've had some pretty positive conversations and some follow-up is already scheduled with some of our businesses. Um, from the, from the providers, um, what we talked about is they, it was encouraging, they've already kind of got a quasi-network among themselves, but not real formal or, or doesn't have everybody in the loop. But talked about getting that group more ingrained with each other from a, from an email trail, if nothing else, but other ways as well, where we, we're happy to just kind of have them in some capacity get together on a quarterly basis. Uh, we feel that's healthy, and they were interested in that. Uh, one, to give them opportunities to share challenges and, and opportunities, but also maybe bring in experts, talk about, uh, how to run a business and give them some business tips, or, or here's some regulations, or walk through that with you, and just kind of give some aid to these folks, um, that are basically self-employed, and also make them aware of grant programs as they become aware. So trying to do that, but also get them together as a group, uh, because what I'd like to do is find out what kind of supplies that they use, what are the materials, you know, help them with their costs, because inflation's killing them. Um, and see if we can't, uh, buy in bulk as a group. In other words, I'd like to find out what's, what's a particular, uh, resource that they need, how much of it do they use a month, and then I'll go see if I can find a vendor and work a discount based on volume on behalf of the childcare providers. So trying to find those types of avenues, again, the public-private, uh, approach. And so then the last piece, the public piece, is, uh, really looking for, for you all and for public, uh, or public cities and municipalities and beyond, for some kind of support, depending on what that could be, uh, to help with the issue of, we need to pay our providers more so they can keep working, uh, but we don't want to raise the price so much on the other end that the parents can't afford it. Well, that's, those two don't work together on a private sector. So that's where, from my perspective, we need some public sector support. Uh, and just want to encourage you to think about ways to kind of skin that cat, um, just to throw an idea, and I don't know if it makes any sense or not, but to think about from a city standpoint, since you own utilities, and I don't have all the logistics figured out, but okay, if you're a child provider, could, the city will give you a 5% discount on your utility bill this month, and do that on a test basis for a couple of months, and see how it works on your end and on their end. But that's one idea, it may be a terrible idea, uh, but I think that's where we're at. We need to just think outside the box as a community. Uh, I think from a community standpoint, um, it's important that we solve this issue. Uh, and I think we have an opportunity if we all, again, private and public partnership, if we all join in, and the operators, um, join in and work together to figure that out, then I think we can make some headway on that. So, but it, that's kind of what we talked about, uh, we'll have more meetings, but, uh, I was really encouraged, these are great, great people. Um, they're scared to death to raise the rates, uh, even though they have inflation, because they're, they're worried it's going to hurt their families that they are so connected with. Um, you know, I'm, I'm the economic guy, and so I just said, well, you need to think about your value, um, and what you bring, but they're just such, they, they, so much of this they do through the heart, um, that they're, they're resistant to raise their rates, but their expenses are going through the rub. So, uh, great group of people, we're lucky to have them. Yeah, the nice, nice thing that came out of that is we had, I think, two, one of the, one of the folks that came were parents, as I said, can't find daycare, so now the mother's thinking of starting her own, uh, while her child's young. So that's, that could be a great win. Um, and then we had another one that was interested in maybe starting a daycare, so we might have picked up two just from that meeting. So that's a huge, huge victory, but, uh, that's kind of what I have. I'm happy to answer any questions, or tell you why you should have worn burgundy today.
I guess there is a need, what you're saying, they came away with that there's definite need for more, that there's people that can't, okay?
Yeah, they're basically all of them, and some of these are probably duplicate calls, but all of them are, say, they get about 10 calls a week that they can't fill. Uh, we have, um, I can't remember the exact number, Mike, I, one number was in the, in the county, and I think the number they gave us last week was the city, but in the county there's 900 youth that need a slot, that there's not a slot available for them. So it's a, it's a severe crisis, it's not 900 in the City of Ottawa, and that's really what we're focusing on at this point, is the City of Ottawa, but, um, it's, it's hundreds of kids that need a spot, that there just aren't any spots. So, um, yeah, they were all, and, and that was important to me, because I don't want to go recruit a daycare center and put, you know, three daycares out of business. So that was an important question, and boy, that was a resounding absolutely, go get them, we need all the help we can get. So I appreciated their honesty.
As far as employment, they have trouble keeping people, that's their status of employment?
Yeah, that, it's hard to get, get good help, um, because of the wages, and, and that's another issue from the child's perspective is, and that's really where some of these mom and, I, I call them mom and pops, they're, they're sole proprietorship operations. Um, you want that familiarity, we all get that. So if you have a different worker every month or every three months, that's not a good situation for that child to feel comfortable. You kind of have to rebuild that, and then the trust is gone, because that person's gone. So the, the pay for the worker is important, um, the existence of the owner is important as, as their expenses go up. Um, so there's a, there's a lot of issues there, and it's an economic model that quite frankly is broken at this point in time. And, uh, like I said, I'm, I'm in it first and foremost, I guess, professionally for economic issues, but, uh, just on a personal level, I just, we need to help these kids and their parents, quite frankly, in my opinion. So anything that you all can think of, uh, and I'm happy to go promote it and sell it and get others to join in, but that's kind of where we're at, it's, it's a big issue.
As you have that, the idea of, you know, possibly something for utilities the city can do, would you be able to continue discussions with them to get essentially asks from them? What would be something that they would want from us that would help like that?
Yeah, sure.
Usually is a, a list of things that
Yeah.
we might not know, but they would say, oh, this would be something the city could do.
Yeah.
So at least that way we could kind of
Think a different thing. Yeah, great idea, I'd be glad to. Yeah, I appreciate that, absolutely. Like I said, I don't have any answer, but yeah, working through it, trying to figure it out together would be awesome, so I appreciate that.
Paul, I certainly appreciate the time that you put into things like this. Um, it's, it's a, it's an important part of our, our community.
Yeah.
Um, and it's holding a lot of people back, uh, the lack of childcare. Uh, so filling that void would be extremely, um, a, a, a great thing for our community. And I also appreciate the comment you made earlier about getting these people together, you know, having conversations with them. I believe that if you're, if you're, that everybody should be rowing the boat the same way, and if you've got a, a, a true belief about something, uh, you have that group of people that believe in the same thing, that they should be getting together, they should be communicating, and they should be having those discussions about what, how to better their community and the people that are involved in it. So I, I certainly appreciate that, you know, that comment you made earlier.
Thanks, Eric, thank you. Anything else I can answer?
Commissioners, anything else? Paul, thank you for the
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
That'll move us on to item three, a potential amendment to the zoning regulations regarding mixed-use districts. Mike, how are you?
I'm doing fine.
Good. Nice to see you again.
Thank you, same here. So, uh, this is on the agenda tonight, um, because we were, staff is asking for your support by consensus, uh, to, uh, direct us to proceed in preparing an amendment to our code, our zoning code. Um, there's some urgency with this. Um, it's urgent enough that we went ahead and, and sent, uh, a notice of a public hearing to the Ottawa Herald, it's going to publish tomorrow, uh, in order for us to get a, get this on the agenda for Planning Commission, uh, on May 11th. Um, and so, uh, what's behind this is, in early March, the city received an application for a rezone of, uh, the Conne Lodge property to convert that property from, uh, a hotel or a motel into apartments, uh, 44 residential apartments. Uh, the request was for, was for R3 zoning. Um, as we've examined it, R3 was not a good fit for that property, because it was surrounded by commercial zoning, and also it didn't meet the density standards that are in the R3 district. And so, uh, staff at that time recommended that, uh, the applicant, uh, apply for MU zoning, mixed-use zoning, RC, which is residential commercial, so mixed-use residential commercial. Uh, and this really, the discussion tonight isn't so much about the rezoning, I want to emphasize that, it's really about this text amendment, I'm just explaining the urgency behind it. So, uh, the hearing, we had a hearing on that, we went to study session, and we had a hearing on it last week, I think, a lot of you might have know about this. Um, and, uh, on the day of the hearing, it was brought to my attention that, uh, the, the MU district has a minimum, a district area minimum of three acres, and that property is just over two acres. And so, um, what we did is, uh, with the advice of, of, uh, the city attorney, we recommended to them that they, uh, continue this item, and that's what they ended up doing. Uh, so in order to not lose more than a month of time, uh, our solution, staff's solution was to, uh, offer this text amendment as a solution to that, but it's really bigger than that. Um, there, the three acre minimum, we're not really sure why that's in there. I, I have my thoughts about why it's there, uh, but, uh, this might just be an unintended consequence of that being in there. Um, so specifically, the section that needs to be amended is this, this paragraph here. Uh, there might be other sections of Article 17 that need to be looked at, uh, in order to address this. So there are a couple of options here. Uh, one option would be just to not have a minimum. Uh, in fact, the commercial districts, commercial zoning classifications, and the industrial zoning classifications do not have a minimum area required for a district. Uh, I think the ag district does, and the countryside district does, uh, and I think it's like three and five acres, something like that. Um, the other option is to just revise that minimum downward. Um, so it, it, uh, is more consistent with the objectives of the, of the zoning classification. Can you go to the next slide, please? So, uh, this is the intent language in the zoning classification, there's a lot of text there, but basically, um, if you look at what the MU district is for, is to encourage mixed-use environment utilized in the character of a particular area, and that, that phrase is important. Uh, there are two, two different types of mixed-use districts, uh, the mixed-use residential commercial district and the mixed-use commercial industrial district. In this case, um, the, the rezoning application, um, the, uh, mixed-use residential, uh, commercial district is the, is the applicable district. Um, and something to think about, in that particular case, it really isn't a good alternative. Um, PUD zoning, uh, planning and development district, that's not a really good alternative, that requires a plan. I suppose that you could do it, but that's not really the intent of the PUD zoning overlay. Um, so if you look at the objectives, uh, the first paragraph down there, retention and attraction of businesses, workplaces, and residences, or adaptive reuse, rehabilitation of existing buildings. So if you look at where we have existing buildings, where mixed-use zoning could be a, a good, um, solution, um, a lot of those parcels are going to be lot less than three acres, they're going to be in older parts of the city. Uh, and in fact, if you look at some of our existing mixed-use zoning, it's on, uh, some parcels that are less than three acres. Now again, the minimum, it's the minimum district size, not the minimum parcel size, the district size is three acres, but there are individual isolated parcels of land that are less than three acres. Uh, the second objective down there, redeveloping vacant and underutilized properties through appropriately scaled infill development. So if you think about, uh, if someone's trying to, uh, say, redevelop some property, um, it's actually better if it's a smaller property in some cases than if it's a larger property, uh, because it could be around, surrounded by smaller properties. So appropriately scaled infill development, um, requiring a minimum of three acres is probably contrary to that objective. And so that's what's behind this. Um, I think where we're at now, uh, it would be important that we proceed so we can keep it on schedule, and, uh, over the next week or so, we'll be looking at the code, uh, gathering some other information, and drafting a, an actual proposal, and then we'll bring that to the Planning Commission in a study session, and then they'll hold a hearing on it, and we would do that, uh, concurrent with the rezoning application, so we can keep that on that, on that schedule. Uh, I think there's a lot of interest in this, in this, uh, in this rezone and, and converting a hotel to how, to housing, and, and we don't want to be an obstacle to that. So that's, uh, that's it in a nutshell, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have, or take any comments.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mike?
I guess that, any acreage, like you said, what's, well, you know what the purpose was for that? I mean, were they looking for larger commercial facilities, or?
I'll speculate, I, I think, uh, if you look at, uh, what's a potential candidate for mixed-use zoning, it could be someone in the middle of a residential neighborhood that wants to have a home-based business. Uh, the mixed-use zoning really isn't for that. Um, and so by having a minimum, perhaps, uh, it would exclude those individuals with, some might consider spot zoning, that wouldn't be appropriate.
Right.
That's my thought. So I think there's probably a good reason for it, but, um,
There's other ways to prevent that from happening.
I think there, and that's why it's important, um, to go back and look at other sections of this article. We advertised the hearing, uh, in such a way that we could look at, uh, the entire article and look, to make sure, you know, it accomplished the purpose of the, of the zoning, of the zoning classification.
Are you aware of any other cities that have done similar kind of things, especially as, you know, buildings become like this, the adaptive reuse and rehabilitation is kind of prolific in America right now, for sure?
Yeah.
Which is really nice, other places having done similar things to kind of fit this?
So in a previous position, uh, we had some situations where, uh, someone wanted to reuse a, a building in a single-family neighborhood, and, uh, we ended up amending the code to allow it to be done as a conditional zoning or a PUD. So that's another approach. Uh, that, that's an alternative. I think that, uh, that's more complicated than it needs to be. We already have this mixed-use zoning classification, uh, this is really the easier way to get there. So yeah, there are different ways of looking at it. I think, uh, you know, the mixed-use zoning is something that has been, become more important in the past two or three decades. Um, just new thinking and, you know, mixed use is a good thing, um, and, and that it can be done if appropriately scaled, and, and, uh, and so, yeah.
Mike, I, I think this project that you're talking about is a great project, and it's, and it hopefully will be a great addition to our community. Um, my concern, and it's been mentioned a couple of times, is, is, is the, is the, how far do we drop that number down? I, I, I'm not in favor of just nixing it. Um, and the reason B is just like what you just said, you know, if we nix it, then they, you know, then we open that, those floodgates to, to anybody wanting to start their own business anywhere in town, and then next thing you know, you know, we have parking issues up and down residential streets and things like that. So, um, I, when we have this public hearing, it's just a broad hearing, correct? We're just going to discuss where we're at? Are we looking for something specifically that night that we want to talk about outside of this amendment?
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, to keep this on track, so it doesn't delay any, any, any more than necessary, we actually will propose a text, amended text, uh, for the, and I expect to have that, uh, prepared by the Planning Commission Study Session. And then it'll go on a public hearing, and then they'll make a recommendation, and, and you will have the opportunity to review it. And, and, uh, I think in order to prepare that, I think we, we understand, uh, what you're saying, uh, there's a need for guardrails, so it's not just open to anything, and so I think that we need to look at that. And a way to look at that is just to look at what's out there, uh, where, where's, what's a good candidate for this, and what conditions, uh, would be for this? And I think that that can be addressed in maybe amending this section potentially, might be other sections.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Mike? Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Mike? Um, how do you feel about, I mean, we're, are you all in favor of the May 11th hearing to, to have a discussion about the text amendment? I mean, we're all in favor of, I'm, I'm not asking, I'm with this. It's a great discussion to be had. Um, I, I, I was going to say that, that our predecessors, um, certainly put a lot in text that is good, and some of it are, are the way our, our, our world has changed, sometimes we have to adapt. Um, and I think, you know, there, that's, we have, we run into some of these things occasionally that, you know, it, it may have made sense then, uh, but maybe not now, so. Good to say, good, good discussion to be had, I believe.
So, all right, put another way, my consensus, are you all right? That I left out there and gave, um, Mike permission to print that notice so we could keep this moving along?
Yeah. I, I think it was a great idea because that doesn't hold up another week, so, great.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you for your time. That'll move us on to our comments for our city manager.
Uh, the only thing I have to tell you, Commissioner, is we're, uh, we held a, um, uh, our first internal discussion about the base grant, we're continuing to work on that. Um, and it's all about the paperwork with the state. So, we'll be bringing you updates periodically about where we're at, but this will happen pretty quick. I think, um, I can confidently tell you that we are going to have those. Right now, the, the plans are being finished up, a couple of them are 85%, 90% complete. They're being finished up, we're entering into parallel discussions with Kansas Gas Service, and, um, you will see this moving along in the next couple of months.
Anything else?
I have a quick question, so the, the contribution from the city, will that come from the proximity park line that we've accumulated?
Well, it will for the proximity park.
Is that what?
Um, uh, the proximity park equipment on this, on the sanitary sewer, on the live station. Um, I believe Malley, uh, has got most of that out of the sewer fund, and the Kansas Gas Service, our intent is that's going to be Kansas Gas Service. So what we're, what, what we're doing with the Speaker Pro Tem's help, who is also our city attorney, is having those discussions and getting the state to recognize that this is a unique part of what they funded. And they are all, as, as Paul can attest, they are all aware from the, um, Lieutenant Governor's office on down, from the governor's on, on down, how important that gas line is to the development of proximity board. I'll answer your questions. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That'll move us on to comments by city commissioners, uh, Commissioner Graves.
I have no report tonight.
Commissioner Clayton?
Uh, no report as well.
Commissioner Skidmore?
No report.
Thought it'd move us on to comments by the mayor. Commissioners, I have, uh, okay, so we had, we had one opening today, and I'm sorry, if you, I'm assuming we can have this conversation if you want me to stop this down. We had one, we had a, a couple library board applicants, we have no other applicants at this time. Um, we have one opening, uh, two interviews today. So, can we have a discussion, or would you like to have a discussion today to fill that position? Because you have a meeting coming up pretty soon, don't you?
Um, we have a meeting, the fourth Monday, I think.
So, two weeks.
They would be actually on the board and make.
Okay, so, yeah, so, in a couple of weeks will be a meeting, um, and then they'd be able to attend, I believe. So, I mean, I, I, I certainly would like to have that discussion if you guys feel comfortable having a discussion and filling that. Um, quite honestly, um, in my opinion, both, both of these ladies were great. Um, I think you'd be, it'd be a great opportunity for you to actually find one of them. So if you can get rid of maybe somebody else.
Yes.
All my thoughts.
No? Okay, good, all right. Um, I, I, uh, I think the other thing, and, and Commissioner Skidmore brought it up, I thought, and I know it's a little off track, but, uh, he brought it up, was, um, both of them were new residents to city of Ottawa too. And I think that's great news, that, uh, that, uh, whatever reason they brought, brought them there, they're here now. Um, so that's, it's great news to have both of them here in our community also. My personal opinion, um, like I said, I, I, I think both of them were great. Uh, if I had to choose one, I, I would probably choose Lindsay. Um, I think, uh, she, she, you know, being a single mom now, she might have, or, sorry, stay-at-home mom. Sorry, Lindsay, if I accuse you of, um, stay-at-home mom, she, she has a lot more, in my mind, might have some more free time to, to attend these meetings, maybe be more involved. I know you guys put on a lot, on a lot of things that your board is involved with too, so. Uh, that's the only thing that, that would probably separate both good candidates in my mind. Um, and quite honestly, if I may, Terry, I, I, I know we, this is kind of out of the, out of the box, but, I mean, I'd like to ask your opinion, quite honestly.
That's your job.
I understand, no, I understand that, but this is also a board member you're going to have.
Yeah, they're both excellent candidates. I don't know how we got lucky enough to have two people with such great qualifications apply for one board position. So I hope that whoever doesn't get it will stay involved, and hopefully, next time we have an opening, apply again.
Sure, thank you. Commissioners, how, how do you get, how do you feel?
I would agree that I think both were, they're different, but both very good. Um, as a child of librarian here at Ottawa Library, um, a lot of people think libraries books, and it's amazing to me, and I've learned so much through her, that all of the services they offer. And Stacy brought up some really good stuff about professional development. Um, and I do think that's really important with our workforce, um, is teaching those skills and improving people and giving them accessibility, basically, to those, those things. Uh, she mentioned, you know, some of those online classes Johnson County has. Um, and I think that's great stuff to definitely have on, on radar as well. Um, to be mindful, kind of with all of these issues facing city, is improving our workforce, and that's a, a great utility. Um, Lindsay as well, as you said, you know, with having more free time. Um, and, and homeschooling, homeschooling, I think is an underserved segment of society, probably generally, and I've probably been around Ottawa. Um, so I think she could kind of bring a terrific eye to that in their relationship with the library as well.
Yeah, I agree, it's a tough one here, the two did very well. I, I guess I thought, uh, this Potter had a pretty good educational background, I was impressed with that. I, I guess there is a possible concern of the amount of time available, and she is on quite a few, um, different boards already and doing things, uh, and full-time employment. Uh, but what, uh, let me just ask Terry, what, uh, time involvement? I mean, I know sometimes you have events that go on, most of those are in the evenings anyway, aren't there? I think during the day, that would need to.
We, we do have programs during the day. Um, not always needing board participation, though. Our staff handles most of those. But as we get, you know, more involved in the building projects, there might be more opportunities for more involvement even during the day. But we do a lot of meeting and weekend stuff, right? So, they can definitely be involved in some of that programming. There, there's all kinds of opportunities.
I will say, Miss Potter seemed to know more about the programs you've got and, uh, the goings-on of our library here. Lindsay, but not that that's necessarily a bad thing, but just a slight edge.
And Miss Humphrey does come and participate in our homeschool group.
Say it again?
Our homeschool group meets every Friday.
Okay.
And so she comes and she's involved in that.
We're talking about Lindsay?
Any, anybody that, yeah, Lindsay. Anybody that, you know, has homeschooled kids are invited to come to the library on Friday morning, and we have activities for the parents as well as the children.
I mean, I kind of agree with what everyone else has said, it's tough because I, I do think Lindsay's, uh, homeschooling knowledge, uh, might be something good for the board. And also, I feel like Stacy has some good ideas with technology and, and potentially moving forward, so. Yeah, it's very tough, it's much tougher than I thought it would be.
Yeah, I do. What would you say, Terry, is a bigger need in your mind? Services for, for homeschooled children, or is that already served in other areas of the community? Or like this professional development for adults? Um, in terms of the community, are there other services that fill those needs where the library might not need to, still not as much?
I would probably say there's less homeschool opportunities in the community, that we are definitely filling that void. We've always did IT classes, we've always offered online classes that people can take. So, not that we don't need to do more of that, and again, that's, we need more staff to do that, or more volunteers that are willing to come volunteer their time to do that. But, um, I would say homeschooling, there's not a lot of opportunities to go in the community and do stuff other than the library, and that's why the, the Friday morning library group is pretty full.
How many kids, would you guess?
Uh, guys, before COVID, quite a few, it's backed off because of the limited space and numbers that we can have downstairs. Um, at one time, I would say we probably had 30 younger kids in the room next door doing activities with Paula. And then the adults meet downstairs in the circulation area of the library and talk about, you know, their concerns or ideas that they have for their homeschool. And then there's, um, another age group that meets downstairs too, so.
I, I'm going to just say, I think in my opinion, I think I'm going to give my vote towards Lindsay um, in the, in the sense of homeschooling, um, I, I, I just think, I feel like she would be a good fit for this board specifically, whereas Stacy, um, and I know she's very passionate about the library, but I could also maybe see her becoming involved in another board if, um, if we were able to talk her into it. Um, so that would be my opinion.
I would agree, I think it's great to have two candidates who are both really good for any spot, so. But I would, yeah, follow Lindsay as well.
I just didn't know what you agreed on.
Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Yes. Same thing, and like you said, if there's a position that Stacy could fill in another capacity, it would be terrific as well.
Do you want to stick with that, or do you, you, you want to?
Well, I'm just going to say, I appreciate the conversation here, the kind of, you all saw some things differently, and I guess that I hadn't noticed, and I was kind of leaning toward Ms. Potter actually to start the conversation, but I think I can see what you're saying about Lindsay, so I would support that.
I think it's a one and a one A, you know, it wasn't, uh, there was a very, very small gap in my decision, you know, on, on these two, so. So I think we're agreeing that Lindsay filled the open position for the library board, correct? Okay. Laura, can you let both of them know? And, and also, as Commissioner Graves mentioned, can you let Stacy know that, you know, we may have some other openings, and if she'd be interested in, in, in applying for those, that'd be, that'd be great.
And I happen to know of some personally. Just, I'm going to maybe just.
There you go, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
That is fine, selfishly.
Um, Commissioners, we also had an interview with Ashley Galasby. Um, we have three openings for the accessibility, uh, advisory board. We do have another applicant coming up the 25th, but we have three openings. Um, one that applied today, one coming up, still leaves us with one. Um, I know we talked, uh, a week or so ago about kind of setting a deadline, kind of making decisions and filling those positions. And in my mind, I think that, I think that she was, she was a great interview. Uh, I think she'd be great for the board, and I would feel comfortable with going ahead and filling one of those positions with her.
I would as well, I think she'll bring a unique perspective and experience to that board.
I agree totally.
I agree.
Laura, do you want to let her know, please?
Get on today.
All right, that leads us to our announcements. Uh, we have a regular meeting at 10 a.m. on April 20th, and then, uh, we do not have a joint meeting. So, is there anything else that's come before the commission tonight? If not, I will adjourn.